I would like to have Mr. Donette Clark here to give us the invitation and the pledge. Donette.
Good evening, everyone. I bless you. Let us go before the throne of grace. Our Father, now God, we thank you again for allowing us to come once again. God, we thank you, oh God, for your presence, oh God, being in this need of today. God, we thank you, oh God, for our mayor and our council all tonight. God bless us, oh God, as we do your business, oh God. Oh God, we are still praying, oh God, that you are blessed, oh God, our house will. Oh God, we believe, oh God, by faith, that everything will be all right. Oh Lord, without you, oh God, we can't do nothing. Oh God, with faith, you know faith is the substance of things hopeful and evidence of things not safe. God, we thank you for your goodness and your kindness and mercy. And oh God, we will ever pray to and give you thanks, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your glory for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge.
Thank you, Donette. Another question to the members from the Delaware 8th meeting. I hope it's a county's pleasure. Make a motion to the members to approve. Do you have a second? Next, to pray long, pray right. Aye. Opposed, nay. Next up, public comments. Anybody come forward for two minutes, you know anything at all.
My name is Dawn Williams. On behalf of the president of the Bell Haven Community Chamber of Commerce, I see on the agenda that they're going to be speaking about a celebration committee, which I assume that the Fourth of July falls under. And the Bell Haven Community Chamber of Commerce has been active in the Fourth of July parade and celebration, and we would like to be part of that committee for that celebration also. The chamber is the chamber office telephone is the point person for calls for people who will want to vendor information, parade information, activities, anything, they call the chamber. Also, the chamber would like to have permission to close off the street and have the Twilight Hour again this year.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Steve Barner. I'm the vice president of the training chapter of the Bell Haven alumni club. I come before you tonight to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you have done in the past, and thank you for what you are planning to do in the future for the Bell Haven community. This year, we will be celebrating fifty-four years of coming together on May the seventh. We will be having our parade, and I've come to give you a personal invitation to be a part of our parade. It will be starting on, starting at eleven thirty here from Radcliffe, and to be a part of that. Most of all, is to say thank you for what you have done, and it's for the community. On Saturday, we get together and just have a great time, and we invite you to come to be a part of it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward for three minutes?
I would like to thank you for that comment. Before I became mayor, I had never participated in a homecoming. Then I started participating, going to some of the dinners, and this was one of the most wonderful events we have ever had. Thank you. For people that don't know, they have dinners for different classes. So you might have a class of nineteen sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, having a big dinner. If you go to that dinner, it's like a fast reunion. And they do that for all of the classes, and also have a big awards dinner. There's so many wonderful things that take place in that weekend. So it's always a great time of year, and I'd say it's probably the second biggest event we have in town for sure. But it's wonderful. It's a wonderful way to get together.
With no other public comments, I call it to a close. Next up, we have a small town program update from Yvonne DeRouiz.
I'm Yvonne DeRouiz, and I'm here tonight wearing two hats. First one is as co-program manager of the Small Town Program. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update. We have approximately $12,000 in funds in our treasury. Four thousand that was donated by Wells Fargo. Five thousand was a grant from a small, I'm sorry, from Southern Bank. And then the remaining four should be privately donated funds. The caboose project, we received $10,000 in private donations for the renovation of the caboose, and they are getting ready to begin phase two and three, which will involve some interior repairs and some landscaping. A gazebo. Small Town was approached about using some of our monies to help purchase a gazebo. Julian Goff had approached the owner of the gazebo out in Pantico about making it a donation to the town. We have not heard from them, and I understand that Woody, town manager, is working on that, and he's supposed to get the answer for us. But we have agreed to use some of our funds to help purchase the gazebo, which will be installed in it when it's good. Wells Fargo grant is to be used for purchasing trash receptacles, and that order has been made. We're also working with Spoon River right now on some state grant monies, and we're working with Theresa. She wants to renovate the building next to her, the one that used to be the old theater, and then also renovate the building across the street from her where the old one around her was. So we're working with her to, you know, get the grant in, hoping to hear some good news about that. Any questions about Small Town?
The money you have in your hand, you say you have $3,000?
Right.
For the Ashes, Wells Fargo. Five thousand is from Southern Bank. You say three thousand is for private?
We have about 10,000 that was private that was designated for the caboose, and some of that has already been spent as you, you know, the caboose looks great actually. And monies were spent on that.
How about the other monies you've raised? Haven't you had other functions in town that are supposed to raise a lot for Small Town?
Yes, the ICW Chowder Fest, the funds raised for that were supposed to be designated, well, were designated for Small Town.
But you won't have those funds?
No, we do not.
Who's got those funds?
I'm not, I'm not sure. Woody received a report from Jerry Sutterfield regarding the ICW celebrations committee. I don't know who has them. I don't know if the chamber has the funds.
And I passed a copy of that report. It's in the town manager's report. In total, a copy of the bank statement, explanation of what's been spent, and suggestions also on how to refine and improve the ICW celebrations. So that's included in this meeting. But that money though was raised for the Small Town Main Street, right? I understand there's a $3,200 application. That's what I understood.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
And I think it will be released, but I understand that once a project has been nailed down in our meeting last Thursday, and... Who has the money now? It is in the account of the ICW celebration. But there's a bank statement in this.
Okay, all right. Who's on that board?
Everything that I have received has been through Jerry Sutterfield. I don't want to leave anybody out, but he is the chairman of the... Has the Small Town Main Street Committee decided to let the ICW people hold your money?
We've asked for it. We haven't received it, that's all.
Well, for the people that don't know, we've had a little competition in town with nonprofits. I think the Fishers and the Southerners set up a nonprofit that was not sanctioned by the town to capture money. And from what I'm looking at here, I'm concerned that we have folks trying to control Small Town Main Street money that's not theirs to control. Now, would your organization like to control your money, or would you like to leave it over here in this other group? Why is this other group who dedicated this money to Small Town Main Street, why are they not giving you the money that they raised in your name?
The only reason that I've been given is that a project has not been designated. Other than that, I do not know.
So why don't they approve your project?
That's a good question.
And why are they, do we have a board member from this organization, other than Sutterfield? I don't have a committee of members. Well, I personally have a big problem when money is raised in the name of an effort, and then that money is held by somebody that doesn't represent that effort. The ICW celebrations committee does not represent Small Town Main Street. And that money for that clam chowder, I was told, has been raised for Small Town Main Street. Is that correct?
That is right.
So is your committee happy that you're not controlling your own money?
No.
Okay. So what we'd like to do is ask that committee that is holding that money away from the committee it was raised for to promptly give that money to the committee for which it was raised. I don't think that's real complicated. And what we have is what a control grab going there. We need to stop doing that. We need all work for the town's good. And if the money is raised for Small Town Main Street, that's where the money needs to be. Now, at the next meeting, if we have to move some money around, we'll get into who the board members are of the ICW, and that they have raised money for their small town and won't give it to Small Town. And we can talk about that at the next meeting. Anything else you have to say? The other thing I'd like to bring up, there was a comment made about the celebrations committee, and the chamber wouldn't be involved the Fourth of July. The chamber has not been a big help with the Fourth of July. Paul would never say this. Paul Wood is the man who runs the Fourth of July. He's got, puts it together. And we're not really having the help that we want. There was a lot of mix-up at the last Fourth of July, and whatever goes on with the Fourth of July, I think this whole committee probably would approve if Paul Wood had some say about it. That you don't need to be having meetings about the Fourth of July without Paul Wood in the room and running meetings. Because he's the man that several years ago, when the Fourth of July was abandoned by the group that was supposed to put it on, he's the man that came in and kept the Fourth of July going like clockwork in Bell Haven. So I would like to say to you, Mr. DeRouiz, please talk with Paul Wood and make sure that when you're having meetings about the Fourth of July, that he is there. The other thing is, we seem to have a chamber of commerce that no longer understands that they are a part of a town functioning auxiliary in some ways. Somehow, they feel like they're not tied to the town anyway. Well, that's not true. And the Fourth of July needs to be helping the town and helping the community instead of putting roadblocks and being dividing people. Anybody else? I'll let you go after that. Any questions, comments?
Well, I have a certain hat, speaking of celebrations committee. Since there's always, there's been a sixteen or seventeen year tradition of Pirates of Apunggoh. We learned that this year, the festival had been abandoned, and the celebrations committee, of which I'm a volunteer member, has asked me to come tonight to talk about it and say that we strongly feel that the town of Bell Haven should continue a sailing event. We've met with Les Porter and Don Star, who are both experts in voting and sailing. And to have a successful event, we need their expertise. They've indicated they would help the town of Bell Haven celebrations committee in organizing and putting on an event this year. And there's even the possibility of the Bell Haven yacht club helping with that. So what the celebrations committee would like to propose is two events. One, the first one to be an evening event on April the twenty-third from five o'clock to eight-thirty P.M., and it would be called, quote, "Burning of the Sox." And what that means, in the voting community, most voters do not wear socks during the summertime. So to commemorate the beginning of spring, they burn their socks. So we thought it would be a fun way to keep Bell Haven in voters' eyes and promote our waterfront. This would not be a fundraising event, but more of a PR event, just to promote shops and restaurants in Bell Haven. We would offer free dockage. Bell Haven Waterway Marina would offer free dockage. We would propose that the town offer free dockage, and any other marina that wanted to participate. Voters would receive a vessel safety check. We would have a blessing of the fleet, but no parade. We'd like to close off County Coast Street from Maine to water. Invite vendors to come, craftsmen, artists, bakers, whatever, at no charge. Have music the way we did before, which was such a great success. And then voters would be directed to the shops and restaurants and the tavern and the front porch, or wherever, that evening. There would be some advertising expenses, but we've already sought out some donors, so we would have the expenses covered. There would be no expense to the town, with the exception of a little bit of labor to help get it set up. The second event we're proposing would be a sailing event similar to Pirates of Apunggoh. We're proposing June, the weekend of June ten, and with the assistance of Don Star and Les Porter and hopefully the yacht club, we feel we could pull this off. What the celebrations committee would like from the town council is to request that you pass a resolution saying that the Burning of the Sox event and the Sailing of God, previously known as Pirates of Apunggoh, be designated to the town celebrations committee.
I think that's a great idea. I do think it's important to realize that Pirates of Apunggoh was a hospital fundraiser for years and years. And then, when money was needed, at the most important time to save our hospital, some people took Pirates of Apunggoh and used it to raise money for other programs, politics. Nothing is more important in this town than saving that hospital. And we have people raising money for things that have nothing to do with hospitals. So that event right there needs to come back to raise the money for the hospital. And we will have announcements very soon that will show everybody how strong our hospitals will be when it gets back up. In just a few weeks, all that will be put to rest. But we have a situation right here where we do need the celebrations committee that is put together by folks that just represent the town, are not trying to play politics. And we need these events in a manner done so to benefit the town. I've even heard that some of these other folks have said that they don't want to be involved if something benefits the town from inside your meetings, which is wrong. And that's how far off base we're getting. We've got a chamber of commerce right now that's lost their mission, and we can get into that another time. I'd love to have the chamber of commerce lady get on the agenda and come up here and talk to us about their actions recently. But I'd like to ask that the council consider approving this resolution.
You've given it.
Yep, sure.
I'd like to ask you, the Small Town Committee, how many members do you have?
On the Small Town Committee?
Yes.
Right now, we've got about, oh gosh, the core group that needs is eight, ten, twelve.
Eight to ten.
Mm-hmm.
And they are all aboard?
Now, Small Town, the Small Town group is different than what I'm talking about right now.
You're talking about the celebrations, not every celebration.
Right.
So that's two entities?
Yes, that is two separate ones.
Okay. When, on the next meeting, as the mayor was talking about, could you get them to come with you as well?
It'll be fine. Come back, because you're going to need formally to get some of the things done you need done. So maybe you come back with the Burning of the Sox and Pirates of Apunggoh, the things you need for the town.
Right, right.
Then we can address them, and you can answer the questions.
Okay, okay. And is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
After the call.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution for the celebrations committee to handle the Burning of the Sox and Pirates of Apunggoh in the future? Or have a motion? All right, so we have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I just do one clarification on that? I've had numerous, I'm Don Star. I've had numerous conversations with Arden Ruth and the officials of Pirates of Apunggoh. Pirates of Apunggoh is on 501(c)(3). And they had some concerns about the continuation of that event being run by somebody else. So this event that we're talking about is not going to be called Pirates of Apunggoh. It is going to be a water event. It's going to have some elements of it. We hope that it can be just plain fun events for the community, and it's going to have some sailing component. But we can't call Pirates of Apunggoh event.
Okay.
So just to make it clear, we don't have a name for it yet. We want to devise a name. But it will not be called, it will not be called Pirates of Apunggoh.
I'd like to ask the council then if I would have, by acclamation, the power to tell the town manager to write a letter to Arden Ruth and her committee that Pirates of Apunggoh is historically been a hospital fundraiser and is known as so throughout the community, and that we would appreciate that event being transferred to the hospital fundraising board, brought to the town of Bell Haven, so it can continue to be used in the spirit that it always has been. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Yes. You want?
Wanted Pirates of Apunggoh to be used for the hospital as it always has in the past. That's what I'm saying.
Can we get, can you speak with her, and get her doing the agenda, and then explain to us?
Well, I'll ask them for a motion. Do we have a motion to send a letter to Arden Ruth asking her to bring that event back to the town for the purposes of the hospital? Move that that be... Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
All right, all right. All right, next up, we've got planning board, board of adjustments, appointments. We're going to table that. Doc had a few things to say, but we want to get some more information before we do anything with that.
After I review the agenda, item number six concerning the planning board, board of adjustments, and the members being appointed, I really, personally, I doubt that everybody on the council does well have knowledge about the attendance of these members, have they been attended in meetings? Is there interest in continuing to serve, present? Have they been contacted about continuing to serve? And are there others in the town or community who would like to be included on the planning board or the board of adjustments? We've got to have a little bit more investigation as to who's willing to serve and what the interest is, and how we're going to put this together in a comfortable fashion and have boards that are truly committed and dedicated to their purpose for being appointed. So I move that we table this and seek more information on the members, their interest in continuing to serve, and if there are others in the community who have an interest in serving. And then we can, I believe, have a more functional and successful planning board, board of adjustments. I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, on the south. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. Next up, Willie Storzoff, by the ambulance service.
Okay. I have received a letter or a bill letter from Beaufort County regarding Bell Haven's share of ambulance service with light up for the area. And I received it a couple of weeks ago. It appeared to have been sent to the town last week. Some conversation with the county regarding us being delinquent on the payment. I've been searching with the help of all of our office staff, with the help of the county manager, with the help of the emergency management folks in Washington, everybody involved. We have come to a point where the bill this year is $152,000. We have customarily, as best I can tell, paid around $85,000 to $90,000. I have seen payments of that size that made a feud in 2010, also in 2014. I have quizzed the county for the mechanisms that they use to authorize these expenditures. I understand from everybody I have talked to that these have evolved from the original contract that was led in 2009, ambulance service. Some of the things that have entered into this since the contract initially was led was we've gone from EMT to paramedics in the county. We've also gone from one ambulance to during this process. There have been, I've been reading a lot of minutes from Pantico, Bell Haven EMS meetings that allude to possibly putting these items in front of the county board and in front of the town board. And I can't find anywhere that it's been put in front of the town board. So there's some questions in my mind as to what our obligation is for reference to the $152,000 bill. With that in mind, I don't want to confuse the issue with a whole lot of numbers, but I want to say that we are paying for this service out of our property tax revenues that come to the town. And our total projected revenues are around $640,000. So this is a pretty good percentage of our property tax money for the town of Bell Haven. When you take something that we're already paying a lot for in the $90,000 range and add another $60,000 or so to it, it becomes quite a bit more cumbersome. If you look at it in terms of what it will do to our budget and you're good at percentages, if you divide $150,000 into $650,000, you don't have to be real smart to figure that's a third or so of our property taxes.
Well, let me pick up on it a little bit. Number one, you have people running around the town who are fighting to get the hospital up and back up. That's going to employ a whole lot of people, bring a whole lot of money to town, and be the sustaining factor of our whole community. These same people rile up and get upset and protest if property taxes go up. They've already gone up a lot because the hospital closed, and the town lost about $100,000 of excess revenue off the hospital account run by town government. So you took a $100,000 hit to a budget that's less than $2 million. That's the first thing. So then you go to raise property taxes. The town council at the time never raised property taxes as much as they should have because they got pressure from the people who didn't want the hospital, because they didn't want their taxes going up. Now, we have a situation where, in order to cover the rescue that is needed now because there is no hospital, now the EMS bill goes from 90 to about $152,000. So that's a five cent increase in your property taxes. And these people go around talking about how the town's going to go bust if they save the hospital. Mind you, the hospital, the loan to Punggol Medical Center is not secured by the town. Doesn't cost the town a dime. But they run around and holler about that, and then they holler about taxes going up. The reason your taxes are going up is because you don't have a hospital. Furthermore, another major problem with this issue is we have no representation on our county government. We have nobody. We got a city county commissioner, Frankie Waters, who is against the hospital, which is in city. And then we have a situation where he, at the next meeting coming up, let's put on the agenda. And then we have a situation where he, at the next meeting coming up, let's put on the agenda for Bellhaven's bill to come up, so he gets grandstanding, beat up on Bellhaven. Well, guess what? The, the highest any community pays in this area for EMS services is five cents. They pay five cent on their property taxes for EMS. Am I right, Woody? Okay. We currently pay without the increase, seven cents. So the town of Bellhaven, who gives them a place to stay, they're, they're on the side of that wall, pays seven cent per hundred on our taxes, property taxes for EMS. And what the county wants to do now is come in on us and go up to what would be twelve cents. So now Bellhaven would be, would be paying twelve cent for EMS, whereas the highest in the county is five cents. That's Pantica. Pantica's paying five, five cents. The other thing they're wanting to do is move the EMS outside of town.
To Pantica.
To Pantica. That's Mr. Waters as well. Now, do you realize that when you move a rescue squad away from where the people are, your response time goes down? So they want to saddle Bellhaven with twelve cent tax. And then they still want to take the rescue out of Pantica. And they're looking for some reason to do it. And why? Because they don't think Bellhaven's in Beaufort County. And every taxpayer of Bellhaven needs to realize that. And these folks who are against the hospital, they don't care. They've got money to pay their taxes. They don't care. But the rest of us care. So we have a bad situation here. And I personally don't see any way for the town to pay any more than we were paying. If we're paying seven cent on our property taxes for EMS and the highest out there is five, they can't expect us to pay any more than seven. We should go figure ours back to seven, or back to five and then send them that check so that we're treated fairly as other communities are treated. But once again, we're getting, getting worked on, just like the recreation department, just like everything else county does with us. They're always trying to get over on Bellhaven. And I stand up against them and take all the heat. But we're being mistreated, is what I'm telling everybody here. Even when they be laughing back there thinking it's funny, you're being hit too. We're all being hit. What I would like to say is that I just don't see how the council do whatever we want to do, of course. But I don't see how we're paying more than what we paid in the past. And I think you check, you send them a check for what we paid in the past or possibly even send them a check for five cents like Pantica has and tell them we also house EMS and that that's all our community can pay. We can't pay so much more than other communities. And partly because of their lack of support for our hospital, which will open up in the not-too-distant future. So it's important that we address this, I think, now because the county commissioners, uh, next week, I guess, going to try to throw us under the bus or a term.
Or we can.
Yeah. Or the council.
If you just look at the expense increase here, this is preposterous to believe that someone can raise the charges to our town and our community as is proposed here. We are going up substantially. And I don't know who set this, uh, uh, situation up, but it's disastrous. If you look and see that we, in Bellhaven, in two thousand and ten, we paid forty-five thousand dollars. In two thousand and fourteen, eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then two thousand and fifteen, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the same burden. You can't, you can't really, uh, pay your light bill or you can't pay any other, uh, expense items. You've got to go in backwards from since two thousand and ten, Bellhaven has gone up from forty-five thousand dollars to two thousand and fifteen, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in order for whiteout transport to contract for the town for the services. And, uh, this wouldn't be needed at all if you take that amount of money, go right over here on the waterfront and support your hospital. This is, this doesn't make any sense at all. We've given away and allowed to be taken and stolen from us, a hospital and all of its equipment and, uh, shutting down on our ability to provide emergent and urgent care to our citizens. And now we've got to pay a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to haul the same people down the road thirty miles.
For whiteout.
This, this, this is not the way to survive. You can't survive financially and you can't survive, uh, in, in life. It will not work.
Let, let, I don't mean to interrupt you. This thing, let us for a minute. We let whiteout close our hospital, which could still be open. All right, we let them close our hospital and now we're going to pay for their patients to be shipped to their hospital. You talking about getting worked pretty good? This town's been worked pretty good. And your county commissioners are sitting right there, not stepping up. Gary Brennan came to that microphone and said he was, he was going to support Bellhaven. Ron Guzio came to that microphone and said they were going to support Bellhaven. I can't fault Frankie Waters because he never said he was going to support Bellhaven. So he, he, he's honest. Okay? But that's where we are now. And far as sending them a check for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, I'm absolutely, completely, totally against it. And, uh, I think we need to decide whether we send them the five cent of our property taxes to them or if we send the nine thousand. But we need to send one or two and we need to do a second.
What obligations are there in the, on the records that the town would be responsible for this type of bill and this type of contract? I know nothing about it.
I have not been able to get provided with a paper trail showing where we could agree to anything but the original contract. And I actually even have an email to that effect from the county emergency services manager that I got today. And in looking at, at Bellhaven and looking at the county and looking at the staffs, we're all new. The, the county manager's new, the county emergency management director's new. Finance folks are new and trying to find the trail on this and digging what. I've reviewed all of the EMS many minutes for the Pantica, Bellhaven EMS. There were mentions of talking about different things. There's one mention of a new contract that was on the previous finance director for the county's desk that's never been implemented or pushed. So we're all at this point. That doesn't mean this is a just bill for us to pay. And, and what I'm saying supports everything that Adam just said. As a town, we are budgeted to pay, there's a ninety thousand dollar line item for ambulance service, but we don't get any credit in that line item for housing. We don't get any credit for any of the things that we do that go along with this. And it does not compare what we're spending per person based on what the other municipalities in this county are spending per person.
So the reason we provided a place for rescue squads is to make sure they stayed in town. Because back in those days, still, they were going to take everything out of town. Like they took your school out of town, all right? Like they take everything out of town that brings people to town. And this rescue squad, anybody would tell you the place for the rescue squads were the people of. You know, if you had a rescue squad, there was a big county and New York was in part, New York City was in part, and it went a hundred miles and there was some other little towns over here. You don't stick the rescue squad in the middle of the county. You put it where the people are. And, uh, the rescue squad needs to be in Bellhaven. And if they don't locate it in Bellhaven, the town of Bellhaven should not pay a dime. They'll just have to tax our people like they do everybody else. But it's, it's just, it's not right what's going on here. And for us to have a person who lives in this end of the county and him not champion keeping this rescue squad in town, him not trying to help Bellhaven save, save money after he knows we just lost that hospital, which he knows, which he has supported, uh, and fighting. He should know that they should try to do some things for Bellhaven. But that's not what they're doing and that's a sad story.
The most important thing that all of us could do in Bellhaven today, tomorrow, next day, next week is to get on the ball and go out there and communicate with the members of the LLC. You've got four members controlling all of the money, the property and the building. That is firmly known as the Punga Medical Hospital. It is not theirs. It was not given to them. They have, in essence, taken over a piece of property in the building that they haven't paid for. In other words, they've taken that away from the people and the area and the shareholders and their families who put that together over a period of many, many years. As it is now, we have an opportunity to open that hospital and have health care. But we have a small part of the community that is against what we're trying to do to help them in their state of health and their state of life. We really need to go back and rethink that from a community and a service area and get the hospital and its land and its, whatever equipment could be possibly, uh, resurrected, which is probably nothing, but what we get the land and the building that we have, where we're at all, to have health care again in Bellhaven and to have these jobs and to have the capability of providing these services that they're going to charge us this kind of money, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. This is not the way to run a town, a community or a business nor any way in the world to save lives or detect people and give them the care and the, uh, other services that they need. We need to get together and ask the LLC board to get out of the practice of medicine, which they know very, very little about, and support our town and our community and give that property back to where we can put it into use. Put it into use to save lives, put it into use to improve our economy and to provide employment and, uh, retirement, uh, uh, opportunities for people who want to come and be a part of us. This is essential if we're ever going to get off of first base in the town of Bellhaven. We've got to do something about it. We've got to have some kind of re-agitation process because somebody out there is not thinking very clearly about what our real needs are in this town and this community. I cannot believe that anyone would give authority to control the entire health care of a community to three people who have no expertise in this area or are very little expertise in it. And there is no way that we're going to solve the problem until we can get the land and the building. If we get it back into the hands and ownership of the town and the people, we have before us an opportunity to have health care, economy improvement in our town and our area. And I'd like for anybody that has a problem with this focus to give me a call, holler at me. I'll sit down. I'll go over to any area I can. But I intend very much to be a strong supporter of what we're going to do with restored health care and economy in this area. That's the reason I'm here and I intend to stay and I intend to work hard to make it happen.
Doc just brought up a point that is so strong, so important for everybody to understand. These four people, Grantley Timm, Deb Sprague, Lynn Ross, Darren Armstrong, those are the four folks. Those four people don't own any more of that hospital. They don't have any more money in that hospital than anybody listening to my voice. That hospital was put there by federal and state funds as well as donations from all over this community. There are people that gave lots of money to that hospital that want that hospital given back to the community. We have a petition with over six thousand signatures asking them to give that building back. And these four people, let's think about these people and what they must think. These four people have decided to hold up our hospital, a building they have no money in. They were given back by Whiteout. They're holding this building up. They have no money in it and think they're right. Now, if anybody can explain to me how your brain makes you think that, I, I want to understand. When I go to Rock, when I go to DC, when I go anywhere and it comes up that, that we don't have this building back, they're like, why not? Well, there's four people holding it up. Why would they do that? It makes absolutely no sense at all. And continuously, people run around and say the town's going to go broke if we get the hospital back. The hospital's going to Punga Medical Center. The town has no liability for Punga Medical Center. The loan is to Punga Medical Center, not the town. If the hospital were to fail, it would be Punga Medical Center. But the hospital's not going to fail. And we've had some developments we've been working on for a long time that are about to happen here. And everybody in this county, everybody in this state is going to see that that hospital will be bulletproof when we open it back up. And you sit around and laughing here and you don't know what you're talking about. When you see what's coming next two weeks, it's going to make you think again because you're going to be looking at something that will be what I'd call bulletproof. A hospital that will be here after all of us are gone. But these four people, we have to sit here where these four people get a conscience and decide to do what's right. Imagine yourself being one of these four people and a petition with six thousand signatures asking you to give the hospital back. And a community that has a loan to reopen the hospital and you decide that you're not going to let the community have the hospital back? Who does that? Next, and the last point I want to make on this rescue, the county's budget is over sixty million dollars. They have well over twenty million dollars in reserves right now. They could give a five million dollar tax cut to the people of Beaufort County and not even feel it right now. They won't do it. And they're coming after us for sixty grand. Knowing that our little town is struggling and fighting a billion dollar bully and these county commissioners are sending that kind of mess to us. And let me tell you something, I will be at the county commissioners and be representing the people of Bellhaven and calling them out for what they're doing. So let them go ahead and try to hit us with one fifty or move that rescue squad. They can do whatever they want to do, but the public is going to know the backstory of what they're doing. Now, let's see, uh, have we decided what we want to pay? What we want to do?
I'm looking for some direction from the council.
Um, may I say this? Uh, I see it on this form here that you give them at the bottom of, uh, it's signed by Paula Lovey. Could you, could you get her to come, uh, talk with, actually, I think, to give you a breakdown of why they have to charge us this much money? I see where y'all, which town has sent eighty dollars over here, eighty-nine thousand and a one hundred dollars. But now, if the, if she's saying here is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Amy, that is purely from paramedics, going to paramedic level and adding another ambulance. That's the cost. And that's coming back because we don't have a hospital. So the cost of, the cost of, we lost our hospital. They had to get higher car and ambulances and they had to get another ambulance because they got to run all the way to Washington where somebody needs to go to, to the emergency room. So it's making it so we don't have any coverage. Matter of fact, just a couple of nights ago, I took my kids out to food line to get something. We're coming back. Both ambulances are going over the bridge. All right, now people laughing in the audience here. If you fell out on the floor and had a heart attack, there was nobody to come get you. Nobody. Nobody. You don't need to be talking while I'm talking.
Well, don't talk to me.
Take her out of here. Take her out of here. Take her out of here. We're not going to have people talking while I'm talking.
Then don't talk about.
Take her out of here and take her out.
So then point your finger at me. Don't, don't.
We're not going to talk while I'm talking.
Two trucks go to where you're running and I wear that.
Take her out of the truck.
I'm over there. I'm coming.
It's a shame we have to do that at times, but these people don't think they have to go by the protocol in a meeting. They think they can shout out in the back of the room. And that's something that happens from time to time. We can't have that at our meetings. We're not going to have hecklers at our town meetings. We're not going to have that. So that's what happens when that happens. Once again, Amy, the increase is due to the paramedics and it's due to the other ambulances. So that's what the ladies want to tell you. So what we have to decide is are we going to pay a, nothing, which we probably need to pay something because we don't pay a, a special tax for rescuing. The highest anybody pays for a special tax for rescue is five cents.
Well, therefore we should pay five cents.
I would like to know more about how town got into this type of contract that all of the money could be expended without having input into how that becomes about except for the county senate's bill. Said we have a previous contract, uh, concerning, uh, uh, rescue services, EMS services in our town. I don't, I'm not familiar with any such contract. All of that, but I'd like to know how we, how this town and this community are responsible for this type of acceleration in costs, even if you go to the paramedic or even if you do anything. You should be informed of, of. You should be informed of potential increases for increased services. I'm just not comfortable with the fact that these costs have been added on to the people of Bell Haven without documentation of the need and, and the fact that these services are provided. I've got nothing against Whiteoak, their quality, high, professional people. But the town cannot afford what is happening right here before your eyes. You can't run a business this way. You can't run a health service this way. And somebody just adding, providing service and adding more, more to the bill, folks, none of us will be able to stay in town. And we need to, we need to check this out and get some more information about the base, the original contract, and, and make sure that we are held liable for this type of bill. And if we're not, we need to make some adjustments. We need to have anybody in the county who has a broad knowledge of what has happened, and what the contract said, and under what conditions it was, has been imposed of these accelerated services without improvement, without approval of the town, I think, should be reconsidered. I, I just have a, I have a problem in looking at the, at the liability that has been thrown on our town and our people without us having absolute full knowledge and the opportunity to have a decision and making, how much can we afford? And they're gonna just keep on raising all of these monies and charges to us. We, we can't afford it in Bell Haven, it, it's just the money's not here.
But Doc, I appreciate you explaining that. That's what I refer to. Need some kind of guidelines of what they're, what they're scheduled on, what they're charging.
And I, I did not want to come to this meeting half-cop. I brought you everything that I have been able to get, and my requests for information have been to the county manager, the county EMS director, as well as his secretary to kick some meeting minutes for our Pantica-Bell Haven EMS committee. And all three of those county folks have not been able to tell me to my satisfaction how we got to this point, and whether we agreed to fund anything at this level. That's why I put the copies of the bills in your packet, and I have been acting on your behalf to try to get this information so that I can understand it. And from the folks that I have talked to, I understand that they have spent right at six hundred thousand dollars for Whiteoak. I understand that in the beginning phases, we agreed to pay twenty-seven percent, and that hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars is our twenty-seven percent. But they can't show me where it has been pre-ordered, authorized by the town council. They can't show me where there has been a contract renewal since two thousand and nine. There is, I have a copy of the actual first contract that was executed fifth day of June two thousand and nine. It does have some language that says if everything's going okay, it can be renewed. But in two thousand and nine, it was not a six hundred thousand dollar contract than it is today. And in all due fairness to the new, the county's got a new staff, just like we've got a new staff. And all due fairness to the new staff at the county level, this is one area that they are trying to make sure they go back to the drawing board, redraw the rescue policy for the county, so that there is more uniformity in who pays what. We pay, Washington pays, Chalka Windy pays, Pantica has some, but we are by far paying the most per capita of anybody. And, and a lot of it is because we have a depressed tax base. But we don't have
So does Pantica.
The homes that Cypress Land and parts of Chalka Windy and parts of Washington generate to draw from. So when you start trying to draw similar pots of money that are not indexed to the population and the pocketbooks of the folks you're drawing from, it makes an impact on Bell Haven a lot quicker than it does some other parts of the county. And, and there was a budget line item for around ninety thousand dollars in emergency services in this year's Bell Haven budget. But there is not a line item for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And I think to go beyond that ninety, we would need to have a big tax increase to even consider. I'm not recommending that we consider it.
Doc, you got a motion there?
I move, we do not pay this bill as submitted, and that we seek further information and background on how the process of this service has come about, and what our, and simultaneously find out what our legal obligations are, and that would allow us to ask our attorney what we should do in this type of situation. Uh, you, if you keep on going like you're going there, you can't afford it. And anyway you look at it, and you, you just won't have a town left, you won't have any kind of undercover waterway, the border, Fourth of July, or anything, we'll just take our money and send it over to the county or over to the agreement.
All right, I second.
I second.
Second, councilman Brooks, on the favor, aye?
Aye.
How does it name? Town mayor's report.
Yeah, we've touched on a few of these things, I'll try to move through it fairly quick. We do have, for your perusal, a report from the ICW celebration, a bank statement, some suggestions on how to go forward in the future. I've also included in this a police department summary of activity for the first part of the year. And we also have a report on the number of sewer activities for the first couple of months in two thousand and sixteen.
All right. Any questions for Woody? If not, I'll move on to other council concerns. I do have one issue. The council in the past passed a motion that it'll be three hundred dollars a month given in four efforts for the hospital. Uh, and what we've been doing as, we do little mailers or, or trips, or I have to go here and there. In the past month, I've been to Durham twice, Raleigh once, and Wilson once, for business for the hospital. And with the Durham twice and Raleigh once, we got around to three hundred dollar note. So my trip to Wilson to see Congressman Butterfield, we haven't paid that out with the council approval for that. The purpose of that trip was for discussion with him. We had about an hour-long discussion with him and his aide in Wilson for the top six complaint with the, with the town NAACP, which is a pressure point for this hospital situation. I am happy to report that Congressman Butterfield is helping us. He's also head of Black Caucus, he's a very powerful man in DC. We also have other politicians that are helping us as well. I won't name all of them, because some folks are ready to go home and start calling them and try to get an email campaign to tell them we don't need a hospital, but anyway. So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve a trip to Wilson on that, the hospital, a little motion. I say, move.
That's second.
Second.
On the favor, aye?
Aye.
How does it name? All right. Any other commonest concerns? If not, Germany, leave me there.